I'll open the meeting for April 2019.
Don't rush.
I'm sorry. Members to my right, my left, right is Mac. We got our town planner, Ken. My king to my left, and we have Emmanuel. Okay, first thought of business, Ken. My king to my left, and we have Emmanuel. Okay, first thought of business minutes for February 11th.
Those were previously approved, just to have them signed.
Okay, was there some typos on this minutes for February 11th?
Those were previously approved, just to have them signed.
Okay, was there some typos on that three four? Is that why we signed?
Yeah.
There's a form, there's a...
Okay, was there some typos on that three four? Is that why we signed?
Yeah.
There's a form, there's a... The type on the February 25th is twice, and the second one, I think, was March 11th. I could not have approved the minutes of February 25th because I wasn't here.
So let's change it.
Change it. Oh, anything else?
I didn't see anything else.
I think it was March 11th.
Okay.
Okay, you get that taken care of, Ken?
Yep.
I didn't see anything else, so...
Mac still studying over there.
I moved to, yeah, I moved to approve the meetings with the change to March 11th in the second recording.
Any discussion? All in favor? Next thought, A and R for Cedar Village, Inc., 79 Old Stagecoach Road.
Evening, Mr. Chairman. Brian Grady with GAF Engineering.
Good evening, Nazir El Kalasi of Cedar Village.
I don't know if you want to open them both for discussion. They're all on the same street.
Sure, we can do them both together.
Yeah, they're right across from each other, the same street, same location. All right, so I think Ken just handed you, was it eight and 10? Lot NB.
That was the first one.
Yeah, okay. All right, so eight and 10, Old Stagecoach Road. We've made an A and R application to you. We're really not creating a lot here. There is already a lot that exists. All we're doing for this application is creating an unbuildable parcel, parcel A. So this is not the creation of a lot. We think it's just a simple procedure, create a non-buildable parcel, which will be left in its current ownership. We're not calling for it to be conveyed to one parcel or another. That decision will be made at a future point. So we're not creating any new lots here. This is an existing lot. We're creating an unbuildable parcel.
Okay, before you go too far, where were you getting your frontage from?
This has its frontage on Old Stagecoach Road.
Now, unless something has changed, I remember this parcel, or this lot, quite a while ago. It has no rights on Stagecoach Road.
How long ago?
Four years.
Forty?
Four.
That's not, you get the wrong parcel. I had this 20 years. I have a title insurance, and I have a building permit for duplex already.
When, I know when the house was built on Lot 1039A, the frontage for that lot comes off of 28.
That's, the front for, yes, we never came before you for these lots, to build them. Orlando, that's Eddie Florendo's house, right? Right, he, they requested that, yes, we never came before you for these lots, to build them.
That lot next door doesn't touch 28 either.
Yeah, it does. It has a paper street that goes between...
No, we gave him rights. I gave him rights for that.
No, Mr. Nelson owned that property.
He did, and I re, and I redirected it, if you recall very well, about 15 years ago.
Yeah, there's an easement, but that's not its legal frontage. It's only a 40-foot easement.
I don't think so.
I, I'm the one who granted the easement. I'm the one who signed it. It's an easement. It's not, it's not his land. I mean, I don't understand why we discuss a Mr. Florendo's property.
Well, the thing is, when, I remember that, that particular dwelling, its frontage was on 28.
That's Mr. Florendo's dwelling, not mine.
There was some other action on Stagecoach Road way back. I can't specifically remember when it was. Nobody had frontage on it. That was a private street. And like I said, I know that property that you're talking to about now does not have frontage on Stagecoach Road. If, if it does, you're gonna have to come up with some documentation to show that.
I have title insurance, and I have building permits, and I have foundations in the ground. Zoning officer determined it's buildable. My attorney determined, and he gave me title insurance. And this road is an existing forever, and I own this property for, before 97, we bought, at like 97, 98, I bought this property, and we never ever applied before you for anything. So I don't know what you, how you saying you, we came before you, and that was an issue. That was never an issue. Never applied for a permit there.
Yeah, the Florendo lot, I believe, was, that house was constructed in the late 70s, something along that timeframe. There's a house at the end of this Old Stagecoach Road that was part of the Assessor's Card, built in 1880, actually.
The one down the hole?
Down the very end, correct. But the Florendo lot doesn't touch Cranberry Highway. It's, it's only an easement, so you can't get frontage through an easement. It was, I think it's called an access easement, but it, you can't get frontage through the easement, so the frontage has to come from Old Stagecoach Road for that dwelling.
So excuse me, at the moment, Lot NB1 has to be a creation of 28?
Yes, it's not conforming frontage, but it has frontage on 28.
When the, if the creation of these, of the separating the lots were to occur, frontage for Lot NB1A would be on Old Stagecoach Road, correct?
Well, that's where the frontage is now. It's a lot. The frontage on Cranberry Highway is non-conforming frontage, so its frontage is currently on Old Stagecoach Road, so that won't be affected.
The subdivision, excuse me, of the statute 81L, 81M regarding width and over it, I don't see how a fire truck could mitigate the narrowness of the road, as well as grade and construction. In my opinion, it does not, I don't see how a fire truck could mitigate the narrowness of the road, as well as grade. You know, the parcel you're creating has building, shows foundations.
Correct. It does have foundations. We're not creating a lot. We're doing Form A and R, which is approved and not required. We're not creating a lot. I mean, whether the, you believe the road is accessible or not, this isn't, we're not here for that today.
Well, we actually are. We are, I think. Why are we?
How are, how are we here before you today for this? We're subdividing, making my parcel two lots.
You're creating new parcels, new lots.
I'm not creating new parcel. Which one?
NB1A. You have two parcels on one map and two parcels on the other map.
Yeah, the other side of the road.
You're creating two different sets of...
The other side of the road, we're creating, this side of the road, we're not creating any new lots.
Well, you are creating a lot by adjusting the lot line.
By not changing...
And it's a new parcel A. So you're creating a new lot NB-1A.
It's a newly defined lot, but currently exists as a buildable lot. We're putting one new lot line in, and we are left with one buildable lot and an unbuildable parcel. So that's why I say we're not creating a lot. You start with a lot, you wind up with a lot, so...
Mr. Chairman, the case before you is whether or not this is a subdivision of land, or an approval not required to the subdivision under 81P. Under 81M, 81M of Chapter 41 of the Subdivision Control Law is put in place. So you have to find whether the road has sufficient width, grade, and construction to provide access to the existing existence. When subdivision control law is put in place. So you have to find whether the road has sufficient width, grade, and construction to provide access to the lots that are shown. If not, subdivision of land has to go through the subdivision process.
So if I can, I apologize. The struggle of being a single parent is real. My name is Andrew McKnight. I have a lot from down in Brothers Bay, and I was thinking on this project, but I mean, there's some concern, by cutting, is that you're concerned about the traffic on the road, and the way the road, and its ability to handle the volume?
Emergency vehicles.
Emergency vehicles. I think it's important to note that there's no change in the volume of what will go down this road, the access point in this road. Either way, you slice it here, either, whether we can make two separate houses, essentially make a divided line lot, but an ancient road, the house that's being made is, instead of it's constructed by right, the question of whether or not they, for lack of a better word, attach on the north side of the road, and we can make two different lots out of it, or if they're, then they're gonna get built anyway.
I don't think the zoning and whether or not they're buildable is the question. The question is whether or not it's a subdivision of land, and that's the test of, of 81M, 81B. Right, subdivision is divided into two more lots, so just taking this one. We have one lot and an unbuildable parcel, so we're not buying it into two or more lots. Across the street, we are dividing that into two or more lots. So this has passed the test for, is it a subdivision or not? In that we are one lot now, and we will be one lot, so we're dividing this piece into two or more lots.
Correct. I mean, a lot is very strictly defined, and this would be, if a lot were on the south of the road, it still remains a buildable lot. The question is whether or not an unbuildable parcel can be built, which is not all within the definition of a subdivision.
What exactly is going to make parcel A buildable?
If I may ask, the parcel A, I can much probably, the left of the right of it.
Would impede on the ability to build in that area, I... I would also suggest, from the lawyer's side of me, that if someone creates a lot, which would be here to this parcel A, that is non-conforming, this town does not then grant them, appearances, we create a non-conforming lot. The town has been very strict about that. So if, if the thought is he's creating a parcel A to build an unbuildable lot, and make it non-conforming, then it's something that's non-conforming, this town cracks away on that. Can't do that.
That's not the question, is the zoning and the subdivision of land.
South of, I'm going south of the road, but south of the road is not a subdivision. This town cracks away on that. Can't do that.
That's not the question, is the zoning and the subdivision of land.
But south of, I'm going south of the road, but south of the road is not a subdivision. North of the road is a subdivision. It does fall in that category.
To get very simple...
South of, I'm going south of the road, but south of the road is not a subdivision. North of the road is a subdivision. It does fall in that category.
To get very simple-minded about this, I apologize.
North of the road is a subdivision. It does fall in that category.
To get very simple-minded about this, I apologize. I see the creation of a lot as per, to get very simple-minded about this, I apologize. I see the creation of a lot as per your statement, number NB-1A, and for an A and R plan to be endorsed, it requires frontage and access, suitable access. And in my opinion, having driven the road, it does not have, it does not meet the latter requirement, as well as some others, but those are the two main ones. I'm having trouble with that.
With all due respect, Micah, right?
Emmanuel. I know how to get on this discussion.
And the definition of this, it's accessible, and it's feasible, Fire Department check it, been issued, and the foundation's already in.
I know how to get on this discussion.
And the definition of this, it's accessible, and it's feasible, Fire Department checked it out, stamped my plans, they have no issues. We're not before you to ask you to make a buildable lot, to build houses.
I'm not saying that, sir. I'm saying that there is a lot being created, Lot NB-1A, and this is, you're creating a lot by the admission of the engineering plan.
Let me, let me explain it a different way. I have a lot, it's already there. I wanna take a piece, and it's still conforming, give it to my property.
That's all.
And so I think that, to take the language of you're creating a lot, I think what's misconstrued here is, there is a lot, it looks very vaguely like an L, and it's not creating a lot that is an L, it is reduce a lot. I think what's misconstrued here is, there is a lot, it looks very vaguely like an L, and it's not creating a lot that is an L, it is reducing the size of that L into one lot that will have, breaking out pieces of it, if you will, or we're not coming into undeveloped territory here. We already have map 90 Lot NB1A. It already has building permit, two houses. What we're simply trying to do is reduce the bottom of that L portion, for lack of a better word, and divide it out into a parcel, which is not the same definition of a lot, and therefore it's not a subdivision.
What about the lots out of the deal? If I was gonna pave it and make, I'm gonna widen it up, make it up at least 18 feet wide, brush it up, all these things, but if I want to pave it and all these things, I went for Form C and get lots out of deal.
Does it need to be paid to be compliant?
Okay, well, I mean, would you like me to do, like, if you, I could do 20 feet?
Ken, I know, this is, is that falling into the subdivision control? I suspect. It's way out of going through the subdivision control process, that you accepted their, their proposal addresses the concern of suitable width, grade, and construction. But I'd like Charlie to, to also review that.
I think a little bit more research has to be done on that road.
I'm sorry. It's, we have an obligation on our side of the table, and the problem is that we don't have the opportunity for you to come back in two weeks. There's no meeting in two weeks. So that puts us into a dilemma of what constructive approval, which we don't want. And we have an option to deny it, or to, for you to retrieve it or just withdraw without prejudice and...
Your, your option is to call it a subdivision of land.
Or this number three, right? Okay.
For what's on the north side of the road, or the south side of the road?
Except for them.
I mean, they're two separate projects, so if you were to view them independently.
Same thing, same issue.
I think they both would fall under the same question, which would be, Charlie, review that road, see if it meets the standards for access. If it doesn't, then submit suggestions as to how to bring it up to standards.
The formal process to go through that is, in this case, to say it's a subdivision of land, and you have to go through the subdivision process.
Which is best for them? Which is the easiest for the applicant?
Easiest for them is for them to say what they, how they improve it, and, and accept that as, as basis for approval not required.
So if they were to withdraw tonight, go back with a plan on how they're gonna improve access? Do they need to withdraw so that we can meet the 21-day requirement?
We can't. We can after.
They would, they would have to withdraw.
So can I ask a question, then? So essentially, the predicament we're being faced with is, we either build the same four houses that are gonna get built regardless, that have been already approved by the building permit, with the, with knowledge of the building permit, or we withdraw our application, come back at some point in the future to get permission to essentially make the northern parcel two lots, and pull out on the southern side a parcel of land which doesn't qualify as a subdivision anyway under the law. Am I saying that correctly?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand. You, you...
What's your definition of improvement? What do you like to see?
Well, there's, there's a standard in the bylaws as to what the access road should be.
All right, let me ask you a different question. If Mr. Eddie Florendo right now, he's got 60,000 square feet, he wants to cut a piece and sell it to me of his property, what are you gonna do? What would be your answer? His house is there, he wants a Form A to make my lot bigger. How do you approach it?
He would have to cut a piece of his land off and transfer it as a parcel.
Okay, with a Form A? With a, with a A and R, okay, right? Okay, I'm doing the same thing. I already have a thing, I have a building permit, I have foundations, I'm cutting a piece to my other business, so what's, what's the difference?
The requirement for the A and R...
Answer my question. What's the difference between this and that? Because my name's not Eddie Florendo?
No, that's, that's a non-fair statement.
No, it's, no, I think it's very fair statement, sir.
I don't know you from anybody.
No, you know me, you know me very well. I think it's a very fair statement.
I think the difference, in my mind...
I think it's very fair statement, sir.
I don't know you from anybody.
No, you know me, you know me very well. I think it's a very fair statement.
I think the difference, in my mind, you can differentiate from the south and the north side of the road. And definition of a subdivision is dividing it into two or more lots. So I, I think there's quite clear distinction from the north and south side.
Look, when you go beyond the immediate task here, this is an A and R plan request, an endorsement for the A and R plan.
From the north and south side.
Look, when you go beyond the immediate task here, this is an A and R plan request, an endorsement for the A and R plan. I drove the road. I doubt, I cannot see how a fire truck could drive down that road. So let's leave it, this is, I wanna leave it at that. Either we deny it...
Fire department had to sign off on...
How a fire truck could drive down that road. So let's leave it, this is, I wanna leave it at that. Either we deny it...
Fire department had to sign off on the building permits.
Very true.
Either we, shall I make a motion?
Yeah.
I think we need to listen to this last statement.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They have a building permit that the fire department has already, if they have a building permit that the fire department has already signed off on, we're gonna be asking the fire department to reverse their decisions on those permits by putting a condition on this road now.
That road doesn't even come close to being what the standards are for a road, for access.
But there's houses on that road.
There should have been... There's two houses on that road.
But prior to getting to this board, the building department and the fire department have, should not have approved the permit.
They shouldn't have, no.
So is it, is it our job, then, to reverse an approved permit?
No, the permits have nothing to do with what's before you right now.
Well, I don't, I'm, again, I'm just trying to get my mind wrapped around this. How, how, if, if they have a existing plan to build four structures on here, with four permits, do those four structures need to use the existing road in the condition it is right now?
Yes, they do.
Then the fire department approved that road for those permits. So we're reversing a position that's already been taken by the town's fire department and the building department. I think we would, I think we would have more leverage here if there was not four approved permits in place. There's four, four permits in place.
Yes, correct.
So, again, is it, is it our responsibility to reverse already made decisions on those four lots? Because this is what, this is what we're suggesting we're doing right now, then...
No, that's not, that's not our intent.
There's four lots that the fire department and the building department has signed off on using this access road in the condition it is, and accepted that as suitable. So, so now, because of what's being asked, whether you're determining this just as a, a, a partial set aside or a subdivision, that we're changing the condition of the And I, I don't even know if Charlie's got to answer this right now. Do we need to ask town council on this? Are, are we changing the condition of a permit with our decision?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, with all due respect, you cannot, you cannot, you cannot reverse building permit application. You don't, you don't have jurisdiction to do this. This is a zoning board jurisdiction, and some, and somebody have to appeal the building permit. You cannot overturn it. It's a zoning board jurisdiction. You can, you cannot overturn a building permit. Planning board can overturn a building permit.
He's right, and you also run into the same problem of, again, it's four houses accessing the same road that can be built by right. So to say that this planning board now wants to modify a road that is gonna be accessed regardless, seems to be trying to circumvent the issue at hand, if you will. I mean, I think we can all agree that four houses can be built either way right now, even if we withdrew our application and walked away today. We all agree to that?
Are you stating without any improvements to the road based on the condition of the permit?
Correct. Yes, sir. We can build four houses by right, right now, and we don't have to be sitting here. So with, if that's the case, how can this planning board then say that now all of a sudden it doesn't approve the road that I, that we can access regardless? That doesn't make any sense.
We are being, excuse me, are we not being asked to endorse a plan that creates a new lot? Am I, is that what we're being asked to do?
On the north...
I don't want to be involved with your building permits. I have no idea how you got them.
Sure.
Please, that's not an issue. That's not the issue here. The issue is, we're being asked as a planning board to endorse an A and R plan. It has two requirements. To endorse, to endorse an A and R plan, there are only two requirements we have to meet. Frontage, which you have. Adequate access, which you do not have, in my opinion. And I rest there. In my opinion, I'm sorry, but I do, in my opinion, you do not have adequate frontage, adequate access.
To either lot?
Yes.
And, and the board takes no sense on what would qualify for adequate access at this point?
We have the requirements in the, in the bylaw, in the, in the statute, and in the subdivision control law. The requirements are there.
So what part of the road does not meet adequate access?
Certainly width doesn't.
Okay, so the width?
Correct. And then, I'm not an engineer, and this is why I would require our engineer to comment, but I'm not sure about the construction. I have no idea how it's constructed. Will it, will it bear the weight of a fire truck, or the, 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 I don't know how a truck, fire truck would navigate around the curbs of the, at the trees, around the trees. So it boils down, in my mind, to making the road adequate, the access, the access adequate. And if the instr, if the, if the mechanism for doing this is through the subdivision process, why not do that? Because you would be required by covenant to say, yes, we will do this for the road, and whatever the specifications that the engineer determines should be, in accordance with those specifications, that should be reasonable, as happens in other cases, in other projects. But that's my opinion.
I understand, and I think the, the reason why the south side of the road doesn't qualify as a subdivision, but the north side of the road arguably could, but even though this board, who's not engineers, is trying to say that the road is inadequate when the town has already deemed it adequate through the fire department, so...
And the building commissioner.
Right. So if we've already have the building commissioner and the fire department signing off on the road and its adequateness...
It's the planning board's job. Why are we here? And I'm sorry to make, to make it difficult, it's not the intent.
You're not being, you're not being fair and understanding. The house is there regardless.
I know that.
I asked you a simple question from Mr. Florendo, you still didn't answer me. How would you do it if Mr. Florendo cuts a piece? What would you do? Would you deny it on the same basis or not?
I would, I would think that, obviously, if he created a new lot, like a new parcel like you are with this, that he would be faced with the same challenge.
And you could do this, you think?
We wouldn't be discussing it with you if we didn't think it was appropriate. I think the easiest way to resolve this is just to ask Charlie to, to review the road and submit his opinion. I mean, we're not overturning anything. Charlie may came back and say it's completely adequate, move forward.
The problem we have is, we don't have the time, we're gonna run out.
That's the dilemma, we don't have the time. So they could withdraw, correct?
They could.
Without prejudice. And come back with a proposal through the subdivision process.
Ken, we, we could deny with, with not, with not enough information. We're not satisfied with enough information to make a good judgment on this call.
What you have to do is make a finding that it, that it is a subdivision of land, requiring the process of following the rules and regulations for the construction of the road.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that. Did you just tell them in order to deny it, that they have to deem it to be a subdivision of the road?
Subdivision of land.
Subdivision of land.
Right.
So you're telling them not to follow the A and R, you're telling them to deem it as a subdivision of land, to give them grounds to deny it?
No, I'm saying that that's, their, their choice is, rather than saying it's approval not required, is to say it's a subdivision of land, and it has to go through the subdivision process.
It's not a subdivision of land.
I mean, legally, the south side doesn't qualify as a subdivision of land. It doesn't, legally speaking, it doesn't even fall into that category. So to tell them that in order to deny it, to deem it a subdivision of land, is so not okay. You're trying to...
I would, I would strongly recommend, choose your word carefully, how you do, deny this. Because you're not, you're not being fair and you're not kind of following the rules. You're making, you're making some ideas to deny it that doesn't exist.
That the town-
We're not, we're not looking-
Parts already signed off on.
We're not looking for an opportunity to deny it. What we're trying to do-
It looks to me that you are, sir.
May I finish?
Yeah, go ahead.
What we're looking to do is, is to buy sufficient time to allow the town engineer to review the road. With the 21 days that we have to work with, that's not sufficient.
He's not here. I don't know what to say. I'm sorry.
That's why we're offering suggestions on how to, to, to work with this within the time that we're allowed. We're trying to find a way to make this work for you.
I think I'm giving you the way, I've been, got all the plans in front of you, and I offer, I, I definitely gonna gravel the road and stuff. But I, I don't have time to grant you 20, additional time. My banks will not allow me to do this. Speaking of which, I already, I have a mortgage, I have a bank on it and everything. There was no issues with the roads. Title insurance and all.
If I may, what is the urgency for you to have this endorsement now?
We, I have, I have commitments with banks. I have commitments with buyers.
But you're already building.
Right, but I do have commitments with people.
Regarding?
It's a business, business commitments.
But you are progressing. You're not being held up.
Right, but I have business commitments for paperwork too. I mean, there's things I have to meet with banks, with, with lawyers, and just like every other business you guys conduct every day.
I just want to make the, the least harmful decision for them, that's.
And it's within your rights to say that, that the access is not appropriate, but in terms of width grade and construction. But do you think that the fact that the building process, building permit process allowed the construction of these homes?
That's, that's, that's a mystery in, in my eyes. Anyway, I don't know how the hell they got to build them.
At that point, it would have been deemed a subdivision. If, if it fell in, into the framework of a subdivision, that would have been identified by the building department at that point, at which point it would have been pushed back.
Uh, they don't look at the, they didn't look at the split of the lots. All they did was look at the lots that were existing.
If, if the parcel is accepted, if we, if we recognize the parcel, does that change the behavior of the building of the four homes?
No.
No. The four can still be built around this.
Yeah, regardless, yeah.
Because the south side is, is, everybody can build two houses by right there. The houses will be technically to conform have to be connected by a piece where some sort, and they will all exist regardless. The south side, though, the parcel that's being built, which is at the bottom of it, does not affect the ability to build at all. There's still appropriate size setbacks.
And you would be willing to bring the road up to specifications?
I mean, it depends what you call specifications. I mean, that's the thing.
Well, that's why we need-
I, I think that's where my blind spot is, is you're offering to do it, but we don't have any, we don't have any commitment as to the quality of, of what is going to be done.
I mean, you might come say, I want a sidewalk, I want water line, I want, I just spent $30,000 and wells there without the pumps. You might tell me, I'm, I, I can't just agree blindly.
I, I think you know, you all know Mr. Alcolasi is a businessman in town and a representative, so if he's, represents that he's going to do something, he's going to do it. He's mentioned this evening, you know, putting down an 18-foot wide gravel road. Basically, it exists as 16 to 18-foot wide.
Here, here we go right there. You cannot condition a Form A.
Correct, you can't.
You can promise anything you want in a Form A. You don't have to do nothing, nothing. We have no power.
Correct.
So it's your decision to say yes or no?
Oh, I'd like to, I'd like to get more time to do some more research. That puts the ball in your court. You know, if, if you say no, I think the, the majority of the board, we're going to deny it.
If you're conscious, say so, that's fine.
You know?
If you can, if you, if you consciously could say no, say no, that's fine.
But I'm not in agreement of, of us making a determina, at least myself making a determination on whether this is a subdivision or not. I, I think, I think coming to a non-conclusive decision tonight is based on just not having enough information. And the consequence of that is the 21 days. Can you just remind me why we're going to run out of 21 days?
There's, there's a meeting on the 20, the town meeting on the 22nd, right?
You're, you're up against the clock on this anyway. What you're doing is making a finding, if you can, somehow saying that the road, Old Stagecoach Road, is not of sufficient width grade in construction.
Correct.
Or the subdivision of the land.
That's right. That's correct.
And under a fo, right, under a Form A, that pushes it right out the window.
And what is the basis
It's an ancient way.
For your determination? You visited the site.
I visited the site, yes.
Visit the site, visit, yep.
The town, they do plant the house at the end.
We were just talking back here about Old Stagecoach Road in general, and there is, there are homes that exist on that house. The town has some effective ability to plow and get access to that road. So I think it's also important to note that if the town deemed it to be inaccessible or obstructionous, that the town would have stepped in and the town would have done something to maintain this road, but it hasn't.
It's a private road.
It's a, yeah, the town wouldn't maintain a private road.
But the town gets access down the road because they help plow to the end of the road anyway.
I, for, I'm sorry, I wish, I wish that were true, then they would take care of my road too, which is private.
We only know what they do.
They, they don't.
It's an ancient way. It's not private road, but anyway, Charlie's here.
Let Charlie unload, unpack his stuff and we can bring him up to speed.
You have another set of plans we want to give.
I don't have another set.
There you go, right into the fire. I guess, Mr. Chairman, we probably should have our, one person to argue and then, sir.
Yeah. Want to bring Charlie up to speed, if you don't mind?
Uh, sure. Charlie, we've put all, both Form A applications on the table for discussion. This is the Old Stagecoach Road property. We're making the distinction that the south side is different than the north side, which is eight and 10 Old Stage, which current- Lot NB currently exists as a lot, and it has been deemed a buildable lot through the issuance of permits by the building department. So we are saying that this lot doesn't meet the definition of a subdivision and should receive A and R approval because it's not the division of a piece into two or more lots. So there's a distinction from the south side and the north side. The north side, we are dividing that into two lots, so I'm just trying to make the distinction that the south side is in a subdivision because it's not a division into two or more lots. It is currently a buildable lot, has received permits from the building department. We are only redefining the lot. It is a new lot, it's redefined, but it's still only one lot, so therefore it doesn't meet the definition of a subdivision. The purpose of the plan is to create the unbuildable parcel A, which Mr. Alcolasi owns and will determine disposition of that unbuildable parcel in the future.
Your question, Mr. Chairman? We're concerned about access.
Well, we have a timeline that we're trying to fight under the decision right now. Is it what you're most pressing?
Charlie, the concern, excuse me, the concern is that, and what, I'm glad you're here, because I'm confused. They say that they're not creating a lot. The verbiage on the plan says they're creating a lot. The lot that's been created by sub, by dividing is on Old Stagecoach Road, which in my opinion does, does have frontage. The property does have frontage, but the condition of the road does not yield access to the lot. In my opinion. And then we discussed if any, what kind of improvements would be required to, to make the road comply with-
I don't know how buildings got put on a lot, but they did. Could somebody explain to me what the existing foundation is, what its purpose is, and for the new one that has the circle around it? Are they both dwellings, residences? What are they?
That question was asked in the beginning. This, this piece of land years ago came before us, and far as I can remember, they have no frontage or no access to Stagecoach Road, or no rights on Stagecoach Road. And all of a sudden, we were told that the building department, with their great wisdom, deemed them rights on this road. We have no proof that they have rights on it to start with. Now they want to come with a Form A to subdivide, if we look at the second two lots on Stagecoach Road. And our, our rules and regs says that we don't have to grant them the division if it doesn't have adequate access, which the three of us have been down here. That road's, it's a glorified driveway. It has been for the last 150 years.
So to answer the question, the building department and the fire department have signed off on building permits recently for both this lot that you're looking at, for those two foundations that are now set. And there is a second lot, which is the map underneath, which is the opposite side of the road. Two houses are allowed to be built by right. The fire department has signed off on building of the two houses. The building permits on, have been issued, and those houses get built either way. So the question is, one, does this entire lot, by pulling out the bottom half of the L, for lack of a better word, and putting it into a parcel, not creating two lots therefore, qualify as a subdivision, I think was one of those questions? And the second is, if the building department and the fire department have already signed off that there is access on Old Stagecoach Road, and they don't have an issue with it by signing the building department permits, does the board have the ability to second guess that?
Yes, it does.
And, or, we appeal the, I think there was talk about somehow affecting the building permit.
It does. I still don't know what the existing foundation number 10 will be, or the existing foundation number 8. Are they single-family residences? What are they?
They will become single-family residential units, correct.
How is it that you can have two single-family residences on the same lot?
It's a duplex.
One thirty.
It's a duplex law.
Through the special permit process, section 613 of the zoning bylaw allows an application to be made to the Board of Appeals. If the lot is allowed to be a duplex lot, a two-family lot, which it is by right, the application could be made to the Board of Appeals to separate that structure into two single-family principal uses on the lot. We, we did it recently on Murphy Street, and we will follow that same avenue for this lot, creating two single principal, single-family principal uses on one lot.
I, I don't think that whatever decision, this is just my own personal opinion, I don't hold myself out as an attorney, as most of you know. So I don't hold myself out as one who is expressing an official opinion, other than the fact that whatever the building inspector may have determined in terms of issuing a building permit, or whatever the fire department may have determined in terms of getting access to this, I don't believe has any bearing on the determination that the planning board has to make as to whether the access is suitable. I suppose it can take evidence from various departments that, that suggest that they're happy with the conditions, but when everything is said and done, it is up to the planning board to make that determination as to whether the access is suitable. I have no judgment at this point on whether or not two separate buildings can be considered a duplex. It was always my assumption that a duplex was a two-unit building, but perhaps it doesn't have to be. So I, I don't have any opinion on that at this point. It would seem to me that this plan, where there are existing foundations, buildings are proposed, and the other plan, where buildings are proposed on the other side, substantially increase the amount of traffic that this road will take. I too am familiar with the road, and if I were to be asked my professional opinion as to its condition and, and whether or not it meets the general standards of good access, I would have to say no. That's my take on it at this point. I could research it a little bit more if there was something specific you wanted me to look at, but again, some of this is legal expertise and I'm not an attorney.
I did, Mr. Chair, if I may, we did mention to you, we have title insurance, we have mortgage, and my attorney, who issued the title insurance, it's, they wouldn't have issued title insurance if it wasn't legal access, legal access, and the mo, we wouldn't get a mortgage.
With all due respect, I don't think that that preempts the responsibility of the planning board to, to to act in accordance with the, with the regulations.
Fair enough.
The time to make a motion?
Yeah.
I move that the submission be denied.
A second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, modify that decision to say that it does not provide suitable width grade in construction.
Because it does not provide suitable width access and construction standards.
Okay.
The second still stands?
A second, yep.
Uh, any discussion?
No, I, I feel that I need to abstain though, because I'm the one guy that hasn't seen this road. Can you hear your mic?
It's not me.
I feel that I, I need to abstain from this, because I'm, I have not seen this road, so I'm not seeing firsthand what the rest of the area are seeing.
Okay. Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Roads three, one, abstain, good to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That decision applies to both sides of the road, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Next order of business, public hearing for Form C, Ted and Margaret Staples, Zero Broad Street.
You can share one.
Have a good sharing.
I was an only child. I don't have to share.
You didn't have to share.
No.
State your case. Um, my name's Ted Staples. I own Lot A and five on the plan. This is a project that went in front of the planning board in 2009, and was given a subdivision approval. Uh, the, the subdivision has been recorded in the Middlesex Registry of Deeds, and, or the Plymouth Registry of Deeds, and the lots have been conveyed to their owners. What we're trying to do is, we're trying to renew the, the approval. Uh, it's my understanding that there, that's a process in which you would look at the access of the road and the lot, and then the proposed improvements. So what I'd like to do is propose basically the same exact project that was improved in 2009 with a couple minor revisions to the, to the road and the sewer, or to the sewer and the water, which is basically moving the fire hydrant, which I discussed with the fire department, and then forego building the last third of the sewer system until future development would dictate where that last section of sewer could go. So basically, I'm asking the board is, what exactly would I have to provide in order to get this approval renewed? Could we use the first sheet that is, been recorded in the registry of deeds? And could I just basically provide a sketch to show the revisions to the proposed im- And could I just basically provide a sketch to show the revisions to the proposed improvements?
What happened? Your time ran out? You didn't do any work on this project since it was approved, I take it?
So, it was conveyed to me just with about five months left on the two-year approval. And at that point, I just was not prepared to proceed with the project. I didn't have any design done. I didn't have any money saved up, and so I kind of preserved it, but I didn't realize that there was a two-year window for this approval. And then, as I looked further into it and began gearing up, I looked at the cost of the development, and I just didn't, I wasn't super comfortable with proceeding. Since then, I've been approached, we put it on the market, and I've been approached by two buyers who are in the room, and they want to buy the property, but my promise to them is I get the approval renewed.
Sorry, I wasn't here 10 years ago. Would you mind repeating your presentation by pointing to the board as to these? You mentioned fire hydrant, and you, could you tell us, what lots are we talking about?
Okay, so... This is the lot, which is the center lot. There's a 50-foot access that comes off of Broad Street, so that would be the access. And then, the improvements, they're a little difficult, too.
That's okay. Just go over the planning part, the plan. Is it just the one lot we're dealing?
Just the one lot. We're just trying to get a building permit on this one lot.
The rest of Broad Street isn't, it's never been constructed, right?
Destructed.
Access that lot?
So, there's been no improvements?
No.
There's been some clearing, but just brush, basically, but there's been no hardscaping.
So, where are they getting?
Yes, this is his frontage. This was approved in 095129. Did it stay gold and give everybody an automatic extension?
It was an extension. I don't know how it applies to this one.
30, so it's automatic. What's the frontage?
130.
Should be 150.
150?
I think it's 150.
15.
When was your fraud date on this?
Excuse me?
When was the, when was the time up on this particular subdivision?
The approval was dated October 5, 2009, and the construction of the way and municipal services was to be completed by November 15, 2011.
Charlie?
Yes?
It's got your name on it.
I know. It's an old plan.
Well, with the Permit Extension Act, that would probably put it into just last year.
I don't remember what the extension timeframe was. Do you, Ken?
No, something happened in 2012. Other than that, I don't know.
How long, how long did that go for?
There were two extensions, so... Was it four years, or? Yeah, there were two extensions to the Permit Extension Act, which they're pretty much all done. So, this, it's expired regardless of whatever it is, but it would have brought us closer to today, is the only point I'm making.
I wouldn't think it would make any difference. You're in the same circumstance, whether there were extensions or not, since they have both expired in the meantime. So, I think the appropriate way would be to file it just as you would a new subdivision, not necessarily suggesting that you need to make substantial changes. You can take a look at this plan and look at the details that were done then and see if it's similar, and, but I think you need to go through the regular subdivision process, which means you advertise it, you notify butters and so forth, and go through the process so you can get it back on record again. The fact that this old plan is on record doesn't mean anything, and you can't record that plan all over again. It's already there.
Did you gather all the information that we just received from Charlie, or his input?
So, the subdivision plan needs to be redone?
Yeah, and the thing is, is probably add your new improvements, and of course, we'll set a public hearing date, going to go through the same process. So, I remember that extension that came before the state, but I didn't realize it ran out. I thought it was still good. Just missed the window. So, that's what I have here. These are the revised plans that you've discussed with Jeff for me to submit tonight.
So, you have that?
Mm-hmm.
Can we ask questions?
In a few minutes, ma'am. So, that's what I'm submitting tonight.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so I have the 12 copies, everything ready to submit tonight, as you've discussed with Jeff, but we can discuss any questions.
So, I guess he has it completed.
You have all the changes? Yeah, I have the supplemental here for you this evening.
Okay.
That's what we're here for, is just to give you the package. I know you need to set up the review and schedule the public hearing. Okay, most of the people in the audience here to hear this particular hearing?
Yes.
I think it'll be fair, Ken, to take some input at this time?
Absolutely.
Ma'am, could you step up to the table, give your name for the record, please?
My name's Joan Sandrelli Trank, and I own 12 Broad Street, which is the little red house at the very end of what's now a dead end. So, if I remember correctly, because it was a while ago when I came to that hearing, my brother and I had just purchased 12 Broad Street prior to that, so, and now I'm the sole owner of it. But what I can remember, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, that if they chose to go in at the end of Broad Street, there was only supposed to be one house built back there. I don't know if subdivision means one house or multiple houses, but that's what I remember the owner asking for at that point, because it wasn't sold yet. She, I believe, was trying to get it on the market, and so I remember that. It was only supposed to be one house, in that the access road into the property was supposed to stay looking rural and the way it looks now. It has to be wide enough, of course, for emergency vehicles to get through, but it had to stay. It couldn't be paved. It couldn't look like a driveway of any sort. It had to maintain its natural state, whether that meant a little bit of gravel or dirt. And I believe that's what was agreed upon at the end of that meeting.
Okay, I think whatever was agreed upon before is out the window. So, we're starting from scratch all over again. But it's still only going to be one lot.
It's only one house, okay. So, the subdivision, that wording confused me, whether it was more than one house or not. Okay. All right, so that's all. And I don't know, so, I guess, if they do, if you do go through Broad Street, which sounds like the most, maybe a way of getting into the property, again, are we saying that it should stay natural-looking, because?
I believe that's what their proposal's going to be, ma'am.
All right. Okay, thank you.
But is it only one house is spoken for right now? You're going to approve all subdivisions?
Well, this shows a parcel not being part of the subdivision, so there's one lot and there's a parcel.
So, we submitted just for the approval of one parcel?
Correct.
One buildable lot, Mark.
One buildable lot.
Anybody else in the audience? Everybody see, oh, here we go.
Good evening. I'm Nancy McHale. I'm representing the Wareham Land Trust this evening, and the land trust owns the parcel of 105A-1, okay?
With the vernal pool on it.
The one with the vernal pool on it, that's right. And that vernal pool is our main concern, to try to protect that in perpetuity. So, any development on the adjacent lot and any improvement to the, that happens on the easement, any work that happens on that will have a direct impact on the vernal pool. So, I would ask the board to keep that, be mindful of that with any approval or regulations that are put on that. The original easement that was in effect when we were, when the land was donated to us, indicated that there would be, anything that went through there would be underground utilities. Presumably, that is still the situation?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. And that there, the easement was also to provide access to both of those parcels? Is that still the case?
This is...
Or pedestrian access only, which was what seemed to be in the more current paperwork that I was able to find in 2011.
Well, this is a, this plan is submitted for a one-lot subdivision building approval.
Okay.
Rights relative to pedestrian traffic. I don't know about that. This is only to develop Lot A5.
Okay, and that any, any improvements that were made on that easement would be the responsibility of the new owner in perpetuity for maintenance, upkeep. Any of that cost is all borne by the owner of Lot A5 and A7. Is that correct?
Yes, they will be responsible for maintaining their roadway, correct.
All right. Again, just trying to look out for the, for the land trust's rights and responsibilities as well.
Mike, probably Brian would agree with me that any of the construction on that easement that's within 100 feet of that vernal pool will have to be filed with conservation anyway.
Absolutely.
Yeah, any application to conservation, we will, we will be making that, correct?
It's, it's not within the area of construction. The vernal pool is on that lot. It's not a part of the easement, but it's within the jurisdiction, so that a filing would have to be made with them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
And you had talked about maybe moving the fire hydrant. Can you just explain where that would, how that's differ from the original plan?
I don't know the details about that.
Well, the original plan, the original plan had the fire hydrant located right on this lot.
I'm sorry, I can't see where you're pointing.
It had located right on this lot.
Okay.
Which means we have to create, build 300 feet of ductile iron water pipe, which is very expensive. So, I approached the fire department, and I asked if we could move the fire hydrant back down here, where it terminates off the existing water main.
Okay.
And the reason why is because they would still provide coverage to this lot, but they would also provide coverage to the properties on Hickory Street, the fire hydrant for these properties, not to, one block over on Upton Street. And also, I'm concerned about that water pipe because it's trans, which in my experience is, is asbestos. So, I'm concerned about that. Then, in talking with the fire department, they agreed that sprinkling in the house in lieu of the fire hydrant may be an option. So...
All right, thank you for that explanation.
Couldn't they draft pump out of the vernal pool if they needed water?
You know, I don't think that the salamanders and the fairy shrimp are really going to be amenable to that idea.
That pool dries up.
Yeah, exactly.
Sir, what is the status of the two lot lines that run through Broad Street easement? They're, do they remain?
They remain. They, boundaries.
In whose ownership?
So, that would be this lot and this lot? Is that what the question is?
Yeah.
I own this lot and this lot. This, the owner of this lot owns this lot.
And they will remain, it will, they will remain this way?
They remain this, right.
When the road is completed, who has liability or responsibility for that portion?
The owner of those lots. It's a private way. That's the way it was approved in 2009.
Any other questions up here? I guess at this time, we can set a big public hearing.
Could I speak?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Susan Mann. I'm a cousin of Ted's, and my mother owns the next parcel down. So, the land trust is on one side of Ted's lot, and my mother's is on the other.
That's Lot A4? A4?
Yes.
Okay.
I just wanted to throw in a word of caution to keep in mind that this is box turtle habitat in this region, and I live just the next lot down. And I do see box turtles. There are two that come to my yard, two separate ones that we have marked and are observing. And I saw a third box turtle that was killed and in the woods, and I have seen eggs laid in the roadways. So, I just wanted to put in a word of caution. I'm not sure if there's, there may have been some work done in the past about like a map of where their habitat would be, but just to think about, like, we also, my mother also owns the land, as Ted pointed out, that strip of land, and, you know, for me, I would say, like, if we were going to mow that, I would just be very cautious, you know, are there turtles there as we're working, or like, think about what season it is. There's people that would know better than I, but I just wanted to mention that.
That will be one of the issues for a Conservation Commission discussion.
And I just also feel like I have to speak up. I have such mixed feelings about this, because I know Ted has been trying for a long time to do something with this land, and has a buyer who I would love to have as a neighbor. And, but also, I've had dreams of this being kept as woodland in the future. My mother has, would like to see our parcel preserved as woodland, and it seems a shame to be building in the middle of two parcels that could be preserved, and I just want to say, I, I don't know if there's anything that can be done, if they could be connected somehow with a corridor, or if there's any way for it to, to become a preserved area. The whole town of Onset is so built up so compactly. It would be such a nice thing for the future of the town to have a, sort of like a central park in New York City. I just have to say that.
Anybody else up here?
Sorry, the land trust has one more question. Sorry, the land trust has one more question. After speaking with Mr. Browning, I have a question. Would the new plan call for sewer line into that lot? Or a septic system on that lot? Or is that still being determined?
The proposal is to still sewer it.
To still sewer it?
Connect the town sewer, correct.
To sound tour. Okay, thank you for that clarification as well, appreciate it.
Public hearing date, May 13th, looks like an open... Open date, if you guys are ready to rock and roll on that.
Could you guys be able to do that?
Well, this is the plan. Tonight, so sure, we can do that, yep.
Can it be done tonight with this?
Well, I'm just submitting the plan and we'll have the public hearing on the 13th, yeah.
Okay.
Sound good?
Yep.
May 13th at 7 o'clock? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, I caught it. Do you have... Okay, next order of business, continue public hearing for special permit site plan. Wayham Retail Management, Toby Road.
Mr. Chairman, I got a request for extension of that next available date.
May 13th? I believe so, yep. Uh, excuse me. Excuse me, could you take that outside, please? We have to continue some business here.
Still need a motion to accept an extension.
Move to accept the extension for... Zero Broad Street to May...
No, this is for...
Oh, I'm sorry, Wayham Retail. Retail Management, Toby Road, to May 13th?
Yep, 7:30.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, zeros, fours, zeros. Okay. Next one. ZBA 1319, 2416 Cranberry Highway LLC, MaxiGas.
Only had one set of plans on this one.
Bar heavy's really cheaping out on us, huh?
This is a referral, this is an application before the zoning board of appeals as a site plan review.
Last time you see it, that's the one they cut it into three lots, right?
That's correct.
Those blue lines are just drainage areas, but the site plan is at least there.
So they're moving the building back? Curb cut. So they're going to get rid of one curb cut? They're going to have one on 28 and one on Toll Road?
Still two, Mike. Still two on Cranberry Highway. It'll be basically the same as what you see today, just relocated.
Okay, okay, I got you.
One close to the intersection of Toll Road.
Okay, now the other curb, the other curb cut, looking at this print here. That goes on to the other parcel, the one next to it.
If you remember last meeting, you endorsed the plan approval not required, which basically combined the two into one lot. That's what they've done here.
Okay.
So it expands the frontage for the lot where this new developer would go.
Okay. Yeah, that's the old line, okay, I got you now.
Yeah, I would think you'd want them out on toll and then make their left.
Now, that has to be approved by Mass Highway.
Yes.
And they won't approve nothing until we approve the site plan, right? Is that the way?
Theoretically.
That's what they claim.
That's what they claim, yeah. But that doesn't mean that you can't look at it from your own point of view as to what you feel is appropriate.
So we have the traffic running on Cranberry Highway.
Yep.
This fellow wants to pull in here.
Which I think is okay.
This fellow wants to come this way, but there's a car backing out here. Why does this have to be here?
You know what scares the heck out of me, Charlie, on this plan, the way it's proposed here? Is we went through with the same situation with the mobile station down the street. Nobody's supposed to be on 28. You go by it in the morning, there's always trucks parked on 28 because they can't get into that lot. It's just so busy.
Yeah.
I can see the same situation happening here. You know, truckers have no conscience, they just... If they can pull off the curb to get out of their truck, that's what they do.
This is very similar to the one that's across from Morris Lumber. It's the same sort of a setup.
Right.
So again, you probably want to look at it in terms... It's not just the gas station, it's the convenience store as well.
Yep.
And the potential for the traffic that's there based on the convenience store. You're looking at 10 gas pumps, five islands.
The one down the street is loaded all the time.
That's got four.
It's busy.
They bring a drive-through in?
I don't know, it doesn't show on the plan.
They got enough room to put one in the back if they wanted to.
Yeah, it almost looks like that's what they proposed.
One of the things that I've been thinking about, because I haven't reviewed this plan yet. I've submitted my estimate for it, but I haven't actually begun the review, is that either you or the ZBA... ZBA is going to issue the special permit, would look at that in terms of the demographics and what is generating the need for 10 gas pumps here? Or five gas islands? And what sort of traffic is being generated by the site itself? What is it? We don't even know at this point who the provider for the convenience store is. Is it the same as what's across from Morris Lumber or is it something else? I don't know.
They did allude it was going to be the same, the same people.
It could be. Yeah, it could be, Mike, I haven't heard. But it seemed to me that the... There should be some questions asked about the demographics of the area, what makes them think that it's going to generate that much based on the fact that there's, what, two pumps there now? Three, is it three? I do have some circulation problems there with respect to where they've got parking spaces shown. I think they tried to put the parking spaces where they can fit them, not necessarily where they're going to be the most convenient for people that come in maybe not needing gas, but will just use the service area. And I haven't looked at it from the standpoint of how much land behind the building is actually available for them that they might push that building back a little bit. Give yourself a little bit more clearance.
Well, the thing is, anything of any size is going to have a hard time getting in there. And if you're coming in with a boat and a trailer.
Yep. Another question would be, okay, where are the tanks? Where is the truck going to be parked that'll service the tanks?
Yep.
For the refueling of the station and so forth.
Those are in the front, right in the front, yep. New England Farms has another station in South Middleborough.
They have one there and they also have one up on Route 58.
58. The 58 one's kind of small compared to all the rest of them.
Yeah.
The one in Middleborough, I go by quite often going up that way. That one gets pretty congested. Circulation on that one gets pretty tight sometimes. Get a contractor pulling in with a truck with a trailer in the back with a machine. You go in there with a car, you have a hard time maneuvering in there. It gets pretty tight.
I don't know that the application package really included any design plans that show you what the building will look like. I don't recall that it did.
This is the identical setup as the Cumberland Farms in Maryland.
It's very similar to the Mary Lou's.
Yeah, I think they're all pretty well cookie cutter the way they go.
Well, the issue I have, and I agree with all these comments is if I look at the behavior of the Cumberland Farms in West Wayham, the orientation of pumps is only three. And they're perpendicular to this. There's not enough parking there. And of course, you're exiting out the backside of that. And the reason I'm asking, is there a drive-through here? Is if this is... This, again, is very similar to across from Morris Lumber right now. This right corner, on the corner of Toll Road, looks like a big consumption of grass area. Curved area right there.
Yeah, there's some storm drainage going in there from what they've shown.
If you look at how you pull into the Dunkin' Donuts and the drive-through at the mobile across from Morris Lumber, that piece doesn't exist. You can take a hard left off of the Cranberry Highway and get in line with the building right away. The way this is designed is it's going to push you right to the pumps and there's not going to be enough room. So I think we... I think, in my mind, we need to know the intent of this building because this drive-through is going to tenfold the traffic coming into this parking lot.
It's called queue everything off of Toll Road.
Well, particularly coming off a shopping center at Christmas time.
I'm sorry, Manuel, I know you're looking at the shingles over there.
Is this an expansion on Toll Road or is that... Does Toll Road have two lanes?
It's a single lane.
Single lane, so how are they gaining... Are they stealing some property?
Right now, Mark, there's an easement that's on this piece which is used as a portion of the access. And I think what they're doing is pushing into that easement.
I go in there stationed quite a bit now and the curb cuts basically here and here. If you're coming out this way here, you're going to cut across two lanes of traffic to get in that middle lane if you're going straight.
And the light's right there?
Yes, yep, yep.
To go back to the trailers, they're going to wheel in here and they're going to park right there, which is going to pinch off the access to the pumps.
They want to pull right in the front right here and stop right in the break.
Lane sequence doesn't make sense to me.
Acceleration lane, that's what they do down the mobile. When before... Before that station come, McDonald's wanted to go in there. And we said, you're not on the floor.
I don't think they're intending to do that much. They're intending the traffic to come out of 28 and use that as an outlet.
Three hours, you've got four kids in the back, Donald's saying McDonald's thing.
You can't get back out that...
You can't get in McDonald's, what do you know?
See, this is only into Rockland Trust right here?
No. McDonald's went away, the gas station come. What do the trucks do? They park right in the street. I mean, there's trucks going in, but there's always trucks parked on the road.
Well, there's only going for one. So once the one is parked, that's it.
One is plenty.
So what you want them to show is the circulation patterns of parking and how the...
You would come straight through.
How would a tractor-trailer, a refueling...
This is the thing that scares us is that.
This is set up for a drive-through.
You know, they're going to queue in off of here. They're going to choke this place right up. I know the one in Middleborough is tough. It's busy.
So no drive-through? Or you wait and see?
Well, the joint isn't showing on the backside.
The fact that the coffee shop is at this... You can see the intent, they mean it, they're telling us that. Yep, absolutely.
You know, you always read between the lines. You know, these places, they're looking for every dollar they can get out of your pocket when you pull in there. It's like the games at the counter, you know, they put them all in the same place. They're going to get you one way or the other.
Well, the other problem is when you come out of the drive-through at the mobile across from Morris Lumber, you're straight on to the... You're straight on to the Cranberry Highway.
Yeah.
This one you're not. You're going to have to go left and then you're going to have to go right and then left.
Well, you're going to have to negotiate through the parking lot to get out of here.
Yeah. Yeah, there's an exceptional amount of maneuvers here based on all this curb cut.
See, this appears exactly like the Mary Lou's there with the Four Seasons in Rochester. You come out the side and you go right or left. But that going left out of there on the 28, that would be insanity.
You're talking Four Seasons by the courthouse.
Yeah. Down there, the traffic's not all that terrible, you can negotiate it. But to take a left out of this, across from Walmart, you're taking your life in your hands.
So are you suggesting a... Do you want them to show site circulation, parking while truck delivery and trailer parking is taking place?
And something, all these gas stations, when they come in, they always tell you the deliveries want to be at night for gas. That's wrong. Cumberland Farms, they're in the middle of the day. I mean, they take up half a parking lot in West Wayham when they're dumping gas. But every one of them, when they come in, they'll always say, "Gas delivery is always coming at night when there's no traffic" or whatever.
And you see the truck across from Morris Lumber all the time, he's there in the middle of the day.
Same thing, yep.
Yeah, same thing.
Yeah.
It's whenever they need the delivery.
Yeah, because I know, you know, where I live on Charlotte Funnas, when they come... The back entrance is Cumberland Farms. When that gas truck is in there, it's all, man, you know, it's just a mess. Just a mess.
So the driveway, this driveway here is questionable? Anybody else?
The one closest, is it marked on the plan that it's one-way in?
Yeah.
So the other driveway is two-way?
Two-way, right. The one at the end of the lot.
It would make sense, it would seem to me, if they've got the land to be able to orient that whole setup so that it will allow people to make the turn out onto Toll Road. Now you're at a controlled intersection where you can go any direction you want, rather than congesting up the intersection so close. So if the circulation was such that it would generally force people out on the Toll Road, then if they needed to stack up there for a little bit to get a light, they could do so and it would do so safely.
Could you take that one out altogether and force them in here?
If you come out of here and you want to go to Walmart?
Yes, you could.
First of all, you should go to right and use that entrance that nobody uses to Walmart.
Yeah.
But allowing them to take the left, they're going to have to cross five lanes.
No problem.
To get that right-hand turn. Well, they got to cross five lanes on Toby Road.
See, we don't have the California spikes, you know, the one-way spikes? That's what we've got stuck.
This would be more concerning for the drivers. But Massachusetts drivers don't have this problem crossing five lanes.
If they got rid of that, Emmanuel, and that was your entrance, just like the Four Seasons, that's how you get in. And then that way there, you've got two ways out. You can go out this way or you can come out this way and have to take the right. I agree, I think that should go.
Again, this is my thoughts from last week is we've got to think five developments ahead of ourselves right now. Even taking the right-hand turn, saying, "I want to go to Walmart." I see the turning lane, you guys talked... You guys corrected me on that turning lane in that back entrance to Walmart.
I never noticed it before.
It's a very short turning lane, it's literally...
And if you go in there with your boat trailer, you can take the trees down, the maple trees, they go down pretty easy.
Right, which is, the next thing is, what is the purpose? Is there going to be diesel pumps here? Because diesel pumps are going to invite your bigger vehicles into here.
We don't know. That's something we could ask.
Well, I mean, the existing one has diesel. The one across from Morris Lumber, that?
Yeah, but those diesel pumps are... They're set off from the two main pumps.
No. The last two down, if you're facing the station to the left.
Closest to the front door in the MaxiGas?
The diesel ones at MaxiGas are separate, but like at Freddie's, they're part of the pump system now.
Right.
They're part of the pump system over in the mobile, down across from the lumberyard.
Yeah.
Carver's separate. Carver's stuck on the side because it's a different layout.
It looks like it should be oriented as being a corner lot. So you put it diagonally on the lot?
Yep.
Which allows you much cleaner access and... which allows you much cleaner access and circulation around it, but helps to get people out on the Toll Road where you can get out of there by a controlled intersection.
I think it's going to be a bit of an uphill battle with Mass D O T, and the reason I'm saying this is, they seem to be using precedence in the existing curb cuts. And that stupid IHOP they converted to a Dunkin' Donuts on the Bourne Bridge there.
I think that's a great job, yeah.
Yeah, you know, I responded the weekend they opened to a girl that was hit crossing the Bourne Bridge on foot as I was heading over to the National Cemetery. So I asked the cop on why that opening still exists, and they couldn't, D O T wouldn't let them change it because it was an existing curb cut.
Even though it was dangerous.
Even though it was dangerous.
Incredibly dangerous, yeah.
Yeah.
So...
So they definitely got to do some homework here.
Okay.
What's the zone requirement?
Landscape requirements, they have listed up here.
See, we need to know the purpose of this, even if we say no Dunkin' Donuts drive-through, or Mary Lou's, or whoever they wanted to have this drive-through here, and they say, okay, we'll just sell that at the counter there. Then the problem is the calculation of parking spots.
Mm-hmm.
Because there's just not enough here. And, you know, having done this with the zoning board in the past, they're going to count these, they're going to count the stalls at the pumps as parking spots.
Yeah.
So...
Which means that you can't pump gas if somebody's parked there while you're inside the building.
Right. Which means you get the guy behind you upset because you pumped your gas, and then he went in and made your coffee and donuts and left that pump occupied. And then he went to Red Box after that, got your Red Box, and then you stopped at the post office to get a roll of stamps.
Anything else at this point? I'll write the letter to the Board of Appeals. Toll Road Industrial, everybody that's driving by on Route twenty-eight.
Charlie, do you get to comment on this also from the...
Yeah, Ken has my letter estimate, but I haven't received authorization to begin yet.
But when you do, you add your comments on behalf of the board, or are they independent of the board's comments?
Independent.
Okay, next order of business.
I might say the same thing.
One release for Bill Beshant, Beaver Path. I talked to Bill Beshant today. Since the town council hasn't prepared the drainage easement yet, to back up, instead of an HOA, the suggestion is to have a drainage maintenance agreement from Bill Beshant as developer to take over the responsibility of the HOA. And then with that, then to release the bond.
The bond, so it removes the homeowners, just takes them out of the equation completely.
Right.
Just for the maintenance of the drainage.
Whatever the HOA was responsible for.
There's still being HOA, just remove the responsibility.
No, there is no HOA, that's the problem.
For Bay Point?
No, not for Bay Point. This is for Beaver Path.
Oh, Beaver Path, okay.
Thought he said he recorded one.
He did. He just couldn't get participation, but he did say he had it sorted.
Wouldn't respond to it.
So he's the sole...
He's the sole...
Owner of the homeowners association.
Chief cook and bottle wash.
He has a meeting by, a yearly meeting by himself.
But he got one house to respond, didn't he?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, two houses were, their deeds read that there was an HOA. Do those deeds have to be changed?
They are what they are, but the board might want to consider whether or not you have to modify your approval.
That's what I was going to say, because that's recorded.
Because the approval said that you had to have one.
Yeah.
So if you're going to change it in some way, they could need to...
Modify the subdivision.
Yeah.
So that's on him.
That's right.
Yes, they're going to remove that condition, right?
Or replace it.
Yeah, that's what you would do through, a modification of your approval. So you'd get another vote to modify your original approval to eliminate the HOA and make a, some sort of a drainage management document that would make sure he's the guy that has to maintain it.
Okay, now if we consider that a major, major change, then we're going to go through the whole public hearing process, right?
Yes, you do, because there's, on the subdivision, there isn't any such thing as a major or minor modification unless you voted at the very beginning. It's different than a special permit.
This, this has, this responsibility has to be attached to the property, not to him as a person. He transfers that property a year from now. The new owner now has the responsibility to maintain that drainage.
Right, he owns...
This has to be added to the deed.
It has to be recorded someplace, sure.
Yeah. Which is, what I'm saying is that the two, the two homes that have it in their deed that this HOA exists, those two deeds need to be changed as well, because there is no HOA anymore.
I can check the town council as to what his recommendation is on that.
Why don't you ask him to produce the deed copies, Ken, so you can see what they say?
See what they say, yeah.
So he'll have a deed restriction on the maintenance of the drainage system,
Yeah.
which will get conveyed to the new owners.
Okay, got that, Ken? Yep. That seems to be wrapping up our agenda. We got anything else pending? Claire, you here to visit us or just for the entertainment? Congratulations, Jim.
I mean, if this is not the appropriate time, I can always come back, but generally the fall town meetings, there are zoning articles on the warrant. Just to give you a little heads up, Selectman Slavin met under Hill, and I met today with a gentleman from Turning Technologies, and we are going to be testing out electronic voting. And what that is going to mean is we have to have things done earlier than what we have been having them done in the past because we have to have all of the information to Turning Technologies at least two weeks before town meeting. So, yeah, so because I know if you're doing zoning articles and if you have public hearings, you're going to have to do that a lot earlier than what you have been used to doing because there won't be any changes within those two weeks. We certainly could take an amendment on the floor, but it would have to be very minor because of the way the program is set up. So just to give you a heads up, I know we haven't yet done spring town meeting, and you probably don't want to hear about fall town meeting, but I thought I should just mention it so that you've got plenty of time. I think it's going to be a very interesting meeting to be able to do that, and I think once people see it and understand it, it would be something going forward that they might want to do.
Claire, we like to meet a half hour before, so we're...
It's not going to happen. It's not going to happen.
Oh, my goodness.
Speaking of which...
Not going to happen, because the technology for counting the votes is built into the programming, so things have to be done a little sooner, which will make my life a little easier too.
Technology got to catch up with us.
I know. I know, I'm used to getting everything at four o'clock that afternoon, so having it two weeks early will be wonderful. But just to give you a heads up, you know, if you're thinking of any zoning, you're going to have to plan a little bit ahead.
Thank you.
Hey, Claire. Mr. Chairman, I have a question, because I think this has come up twice. The first discussion here on the Nazis discussion. The twenty-one days, we seem to hit this roadblock every time there's a town meeting. And I don't know how to prevent this from happening. Is it just that he pulled his application late in the process? Was it precision timing, or should the building department and town hall be told, there's an absence of a meeting, don't issue a permit based on the twenty-one day restriction? Because we're in a fire alarm mode again. We just did this last time.
Here we go again. Are you making an assumption that it's strategic planning, or is it just coincidence? You know...
Well, I don't, it doesn't really matter if it was one or the other, but it's not coincidence if there's not enough days in between meetings.
But we do have tools to avoid it.
But how does this, so when do we think he, when was the twenty-one days going to run out?
Twenty-one days from tonight.
Twenty-one days from tonight, right?
Fifteenth, twenty...
So we know when there's an absence of meetings, so we should just not grant twenty-one days.
You can't, Mark, you can't.
Then we can't...
You have twenty-one days.
It's forcing us to make decisions.
That's correct.
And that might be, some people might use that tool by design. I mean, I'm not suggesting that he did, but...
Right, but put us in a bad position of, you know, we're choosing of the worst of two evils here of how we're deciding on this.
Well, that's why I was trying to give him an out, and asking him if he would withdraw it so that we could have Charlie review, have the time to have Charlie review the road, because at that point, now we're buying the time that we need. But we're doing it by him granting it to us rather than just flat-out denying the request.
But logistically speaking, we meet on the second and fourth of the month, right? The town meetings fall theoretically in the middle of a month. If for the month of town meetings, we switch our orientation of meetings to the first and the third, we wouldn't run into this hiccup.
It's too confusing.
You can't, you can't tell somebody they can't file a plan.
No, it allows them to file their plan, but it also allows us to operate within a twenty-one day window. Because otherwise, we keep forcing ourselves every six months into this thirty-day window in which just, just, I don't think it's a big logistics problem. We publish the calendar on an annual basis. The month of the town meetings, spring and fall meetings, the planning board and zoning board, whoever, whatever boards it affects, it probably should affect every board, needs to conduct business on the first and third. Because, you know, again, we may not think this was a catastrophic decision tonight, but some of these are, they do have private business consequences to them. I don't doubt that, you know, banks are breathing down his neck and investors are holding back money if this thing gets pushed thirty days. People take their money and they go elsewhere, so if it's a matter of us adjusting to accommodate, you know, the ability to operate within twenty-one days, I think it makes sense. I can only speak for myself, it wouldn't bother me in those months if we were meeting the first and third, and it's just, we're creating this circumstance every six months based on our meeting agenda.
Makes sense.
We're the driving fact of it, factor. It's two cents. Not even two valuable cents, two useless, unprinted cents.
March Madness.
Yes.
Anything else?
Motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can you make a motion?
Sure.
To adjourn?
Before you do, Ken, are you going to bring up the release for the security on Bay Point?
Oh, thank you.
How are they doing with the Italian? I withdraw my motion.
Well, they, I was asked to come in and make an inspection on drainage. The other, last week I went in there to basically go over the plans that presumably had been approved. And I made a comment to Mr. Reynolds about the condition of Cahoon Road, that it was dirt-covered. I asked him if he was going to sweep it, and he said, well, we swept it this morning. Well, I won't disagree with him, I wasn't there, so I can't prove yes or no, but it certainly didn't look like it had been. But in the meantime, he says, well, we're going to start the drainage. So he says, okay, when's that going to happen? Well, right away. So last, I think it was Friday, I got a call from his contractor saying they wanted to start the drainage, because I can meet them this morning. So I went down there this morning, and they are going to begin the drainage on Cahoon Street. So I asked them if they had contacted the fire department, or EMS, or police department, because once you open up holes for catch basins and cross pipes and so forth, you're going to block that access. And they said, well, we did before. I says, well, you're going to do it again, because they won't know that you're in here digging holes like that. So presumably, they did today. I'm on a schedule with them to do basically one catch basin per day because that's how they want to do it, to try and keep the road open, and so I'll try to accommodate them as best I can. But after that, then they've got to continue the work to begin to put the base down and put the binder cores on that. So I'll be continuing to report on that as we go along. I did find a minor grade problem in the existing plan versus the new plan. There was a two-foot grade difference in the elevation of one of the drainage manholes, and I'm suggesting that that might have been the reason why the drainage systems got deepened when they did. But we're working with that now, and we solved the problem, so there's no issue there. But it's not one of the easiest projects that I've had to inspect.
How's the problem with the contractor traffic on Cahoon Road? Is that resolved?
You haven't heard any rumblings of it, so I'm assuming that everybody's okay.
Uh, no, not exactly.
Okay. There was a truck came in today, had a load of, I think either manholes or catch basins on it, and they did come in Bay Point Drive, they did not go in by the other road, so, but...
We have a report that, that came from Cahoon's side as well, too.
Okay.
But before you, Charlie has recommended the release of twenty thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars for the work completed, plus the contingency fifty percent of ten thousand two hundred and twenty-four, for a release of thirty thousand six hundred and seventy-two dollars. This would leave the remaining amount after the current release of five hundred and seventy-two thousand seven hundred and five dollars and fifteen cents.
Essentially, the release is for some work that was completed to the satisfaction of the water department. And there's a letter which, an email came from the water department saying that they were happy with it. So there was some money released for that. They asked for a release on grinding up the stumps in the stump pile, which they did. So that takes care of that issue, and they also asked for a release on money for the drainage basins. I reduced the amount that I recommended to half the requested amount because they just haven't completed enough of it, in my opinion, to warrant that kind of a release. There's still money in the account for the remainder of the drainage areas that have to be built. Loam and seed, monitoring well on the bottom of it, riprap and so forth, that has to be done. So it's basically those items. They're not after anything else right now.
Motion to add that, the release of thirty thousand six hundred and seventy-two dollars.
I move that we approve the release of thirty thousand six hundred and seventy-two dollars to Stone Street Corporation.
Yes.
From, okay, do you need more language?
No.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four, zero.
Thank you, and I assume that George is going to make the report to town meeting on the required by state law. The planning board held its public hearing and made its recommendation to town meeting.
Sounds good.
Since there's no other volunteers, we'll put it on George.
That's right, I was just thinking the same thing.
Do we need a motion to make, make it official for him, or you're going to give him the bad news, Ken?
Oh, yeah, I'll just give him the bad news.
Okay.
We moved the, adjourned the meeting.
We're here second to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four, zero.
World record, fellas. Turn around, look at the clock.
Oh.